Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, November 4th, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order. Pastor Bobby Kirkpatrick is gonna bless us tonight, and then, right after him, remain standing, please, and Micah and Rebecca are gonna come up and lead us in our pledges.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering this group here tonight, this group of officials, the city members. Lord, we pray that the decisions that are made are made with wisdom, wisdom that comes from you, and that is concerned with love of neighbor as much as we love ourselves. And, Lord, where we have disagreements, we pray that we would be agents of peace and reconciliation amongst one another, that we would have grace with one another and forgiveness. And, Lord, we ask that your Spirit be here, help us to do the best we can. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Bobby.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ladies. Great job. Item four, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Okay, Sanji Gardner. You're the one that filled out the card, Sanji.
I haven't filled it out.
Come on up. Tell us about Art in the Park.
And I'm the red card person, so if you give a yellow, you've got one minute left, and red, your three minutes are up.
Well, on the agenda tonight is park fees for Stevenson Park and various other parks in Friendswood for, I guess, rental fees and other fees that are coming along with that. I was just calling that I oppose to those fees. I mean, coming from a nonprofit organization, it's very steep. We bring a festival to the city of Friendswood. We're a 100% volunteer organization, nonprofit organization, bringing awareness and support for the arts in our community. And with these fees, that it would be very detrimental and possibly unattainable, especially at this late in the date, our event is in less than two weeks. So, these fees, we're looking at $3,000 versus $400 with a returnable deposit. So, it's very hard for us to be able to come up with that kind of sponsorship just to pay for the city's fees. So, I'm just letting you know that it's gonna be difficult. We bring a really nice festival. It's a two-day event. There's a lot of people that attend this event. They have a really good time. It raises awareness for the arts, and then we support back to the schools for their art programs and other art installations that go up in Friendswood. I mean, you've noticed how beautiful they have turned out, like the wall on Clearview Avenue and the city's bathrooms and various other installations that we've done around town. And our event this year is bigger and better than it's ever been. A lot of the schools are participating and actually doing art in the park during the two-day event. So, we'd love for all of y'all to come out and enjoy it, and the community to enjoy it and support the arts. So, that's all I have to say is.
Thanks, Sanji.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate it.
Sarah Peters.
Okay, so I'm Sarah Peters, and I know a lot of you guys, but I don't know all of you guys, so I am not... city stuff is not really my thing, but events are my thing, and I have thrown quite a few in this town over the last 10 years. Art in the Park, like Sanji said, this is our 10th year, so it's just really turned into something much larger than we ever, ever anticipated for it to be at this point. I think it's safe to say that we probably bring about 10,000 people into a park, the park, Stevenson Park, over the weekend, and that's a two-day event, and it lasts from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM and 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, all of those hours are what we're talking about. So, we're not talking about a small, two-hour window where we throw five to six to 10,000 people into the park. We're talking about an entire day's worth of events. So, it's a lot of come and go, which many of you know, a lot of events are that way. Some are maybe a concert that is, for example, when you have concert in the park, you have a window of two hours, everybody's gonna show up for that time. Okay, so, my point is that we have a lot of come and go. I'm looking at the proposal for the events, and there's a few questions here that I'm just not sure how it affects us and how we would adhere to it, specifically things that are looking at our attendance numbers, because we're, like I said, not having all of these people in the park at one time. I also want to explain that Art in the Park is, it's pretty unique, because a lot of events are event, or, excuse me, they're based on experience. People are coming to San in the Park, I have to hurry. Okay, so, basically, we generate income for the city. All of the sales that happen over the weekend are taxed. If we can't do this event, I tend to think that that's a pretty big hit for the city. We bring in a lot of people over the weekend, mostly from Houston, League City, Friendswood, Pearland, et cetera. So, I just want you guys to think about that and how it's gonna affect the little people, and that's it. Okay? All right.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks.
RW Landville.
Sir, this is the second time in 15 years that I've come before the city to report what I believe is an impending disaster facing our city. That is an emergen... is going to require an emergency response to protect the city of Friendswood, League City, Nassau Bay, and Seabrook from a Friendswood city governance problem. Today, I'm reporting about the sewer bridge over Clear Creek, which goes from Poly Ranch to the Black Hawk Sewer Treatment Plant, where expected erosion has again, and I emphasize "again," undermined the bridge support structure due to city neglect. When that bridge support structure was first installed back in the 1980s, it was completely surrounded by land. Right now, one of the bridge support bases, which is roughly seven-foot by seven-foot by seven-foot concrete, that most likely is surrounding a large piling that goes down into the ground underneath it, about 50% of that is currently hanging over the creek right now. It is not supported. Both of the support structure blocks have multiple stress fractures in the top surfaces on several of the surfaces of those support structure. And my question is whether or not the city is monitoring these things for growth? And I need to be, I need some help, and I think that the city of Friendswood citizens also need to understand why scheduled inspections are not revealing this damage to allow effective correct maintenance instead of an emergency response. So, when will the city act? Who's responsible? City councils, city manager, public works manager, public works employees? You owe the citizens of Friendswood a public explanation of why this has happened again and you're doing, and what you're doing to prevent recurrence. And while you're at it, you gotta report on the condition of our potable water wells, pumps, and tanks that should be providing 80% of the city's water anyway and not wasting our tax dollars by enriching the Houston city waterworks for treated sewage as our potable drinking water. And if the Friendswood reporter, the Reporter News is present, I'd ask you to follow the city governance issue and report your findings at the next findings to the community. And here's some pictures. Forty percent of the bulkheads are missing right now. They've been eroded away, and pictures of the block hanging over the creek there. That's all I've got to say. I'll see you next time. About it next...
William Howell III from Angleton.
I'm all the way from Angleton yesterday. I'm here not as a citizen or anything, but I did have a little complaint, and I think the city council and the mayor needs to hear that. I'm talking about the oversized loads that's come through town. Y'all aware about the two big trucks that sat out there for three days? Well, unfortunately, my son was a driver of one, and my other son, they're twins, was the supervisor of one. Now, I've been reading on the Facebook pages and that, that your chief had sat there and said that these trucks were voluntarily shut down till they could find another route. Well, that's not so. They were threatened to go to jail. They were told that they were not gonna go through the city, and they were told other things. And all this should be on body cams, because there was a lot of officers there, so we should have some body cam footage of that. Now, on the third day, when they did not have a permit, the drivers did not have a permit, and I pulled the permits of the original load, and on here, it has nowhere in here that says that the city, that the drivers or anybody has to contact the city of Friendswood. There's nowhere in here. It's a state-maintaining highway. And I'm sorry these trucks come through here all the time, but they don't make the routes, the state makes the route. And your chief pulled up front, stopped the load from coming through, because there was supposed to be a tree that was supposed to cut. Now, it sets out in here the guidelines of what, how to take care of that. They contacted the tech doc, tech doc told them that you can cut the tree at 18 feet, can't cut it any higher. If load's higher than that, you have to pick the tree up with the trucks, which they had all the equipment to do so. On the third day, your chief made the comment to my son and told him that he needed to move the truck. My son told him, he says, "I don't have a valid permit to move that load." He said, "You'll move it, or I'll put you in jail." He said, "I don't have a valid permit." Your chief was, response was, "Put him in the car." They arrested him, put him in the car, and it goes on, the office gets involved, and everybody's involved. We have a lot of people involved in that, and I'm just getting to the bottom of this. But the chief actually went back, pulled him out of the car, unhandcuffed him, and told him, "This does not need to go any further than here." To me, that is called official oppression. It's called a false arrest and a violation of civil rights. So, I'm asking you as your city, your city council, your city, city council, to look into that and investigate that, because I'll be making a statement towards the Galveston District Attorney's Office to see if they'll look into it. It's unjust. I'm sorry that I don't live here, and I'm sorry that these trucks come through here, but these guys, they're just doing their job, and when you are forced, and I do mean forced, and like your chief said, they voluntarily shut down. No, sir. They were threatened by arrest if they didn't. So, that's all I had to say. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Like I say, I have your original permits if you want them.
Thank you. Item five, our work session. We're gonna talk about park fees.
Mayor, as James Tony comes to the podium to go over the park fee discussion, I did wanna mention that the fees that are being discussed will not be implemented before the Art in the Park. This is an item for workshop purposes, to have a discussion with council. Nothing has been finalized, and so these fees, if adopted in the future, would apply to future events that are not already scheduled.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like Mariah mentioned, Parks Department's here to workshop with you regarding fees, but not just fees, it's about large events held in Stevenson Park. And if you recall, I guess several years back, there was some dialogue with council regarding large events outside of city facilities on private property, and there was a large event permit instituted during that time. The Parks Department didn't feel the need to weigh in on that, because we didn't have the need of overabundance of large events coming into the park. And so, we passed and utilized our own permit that we had in-house for residential permits, such as groups coming in to use the park, family members. Well, with the increase in, you know, visits, people calling, asking to utilize Stevenson Park for large events, and also, you'll see later on, we'll talk about the maintenance and how it affects our maintenance with these large events that are occurring in the park, the Parks Department decided it's best for us to now create some large park event permit for Stevenson Park and other parks. The reason why people are, you know, coming and calling, and we're getting calls at least once a week about new groups wanting to utilize Stevenson Park, is because the park's a beautiful park, and it's centrally located here on 518. It allows for marketing for people to have an event, and, you know, as people are driving by, traffic driving by, people can say, "Hey, what's going in the park? Let me stop and take a look." And so, that helps that particular person's event that's happening in the park. Also, because it's centrally located, it also is one of the largest parks in this area that can accommodate large crowds. You know, as you'll learn later when Michael comes up to present about the research that was done on fees, we noticed that a lot of other cities do not hold large events in their facilities, in their parks. One, because they can't accommodate, and two, because of the maintenance that goes along with the upkeep and cleaning of events from large, from large events happening in their parks. So, to walk you through the reason for us coming to you to talk about instituting a large park event permit, one is... the first one talks about current low fees are attracting more and more large events. So, like I mentioned earlier, our current fees for large events are basically the same fees that you would charge for someone who's having a normal family picnic in the park. So, those fees are extremely low for a large event. So, not only for nonprofit, but also commercial entities. So, if there's a commercial group that's coming, or for-profit group that's coming to utilize the park, this is a great opportunity for them to come and utilize Stevenson Park with a fee set at $200 or $175 or $50 for the gazebo and some of the surrounding facilities inside of Stevenson. So, it's time for us to take a look at these fees and maybe make some adjustments to help offset some of the costs that associated with our O&amp;M related to the parks. The other issue is the current budget doesn't allow for increased maintenance costs. You know, for the last several years, we haven't received or seen an increase in our operating maintenance budgets, and it's understandable. We haven't seen that increase, and so we may do with what council gives us. But when you start to have these large events and they start to have destruction in the park, things are breaking, it comes out of our normal maintenance budget, which is really not large enough to handle unexpected damages to the park. So, when that happens, then we have to use monies from other parts of our budget, i.e. our facility maintenance budget, which then puts a damper and a hold in that budget. So, you know, again, not having an increase in our budget to handle some of these problems that happen from a large group causes problems for us. Next one, KFB has expressed concerns about growing number of events. Well, KFB has a beautification plan, and their beautification plan is for all parks, and there's lots of programming that they like to do for all the city parks, particularly Stevenson Park. And when we have to utilize some of their funds and their budget to help repair some of the damage from the parks, it causes problems for their budget, and it causes problems for their plans, i.e., it makes them have to look at alternative ways to provide different programming in the park and beautification programs. The next one, excessive use of the park is affecting the beautification plan. I mentioned that, you know. Again, they're using their funds and their monies to provide more beautification programs in the park, i.e. the butterfly garden that you see in Stevenson. They're looking at adding some mother amenities to the park, but with limited funding, because we have to maybe sometimes utilize some of their funds for repairs, like I said, puts a damper on their program. And then, TML insurance policy calls for a $2,500 deductible for, per facility. So, if a group was to utilize one of the parks and they rent out the pavilion, we have two pavilions, and/or the gazebo, if significant damage occurred to one of those facilities, then that would require us, if we're unable to receive damages from them, i.e. a deposit, it would cost the city $2,500 per facility to make repairs to that, to that structure. So, you're talking about $7,500 if someone was to rent the entire park, three facilities, and significant damage happened to one or all of those, that's what we would be looking at as far as our budget to make the necessary repairs to get that facility back online. New special event permit applications to capture more detailed information. So, the reason for the permit, again, is to capture that additional information that's needed. Park plan, we're gonna ask that individual to provide us with a parking plan. That parking plan needs to show us how they plan to park their participants that are coming in. Everyone knows that there's limited parking around Stevenson Park, and if someone's gonna have a large event, then you have to utilize the neighborhoods and also local businesses. So, we're asking them to create a parking plan for their event, so they can show us how they plan to utilize parking. This parking plan may require for them to bring in a shuttling service, to, like I said, to help ease the amount of traffic that's going through the city, as well as ease the amount of headaches for our local businesses. Event layout, the event layout, again, is just a layout of the park to show us how the park would be utilized, what facilities would be utilized, and how they intend to hold their event. Also, they need to have a backup plan, just in case the park is saturated and unable to be utilized. They need to have an event layout for their backup plan B. Emergency plan, emergency plan requires them to show us how they're gonna handle an emergency situation, i.e. if there's a lost child, or if there's a significant issue in the park where there's a, you know, a mass shooter or some type of significant emergency situation, they need to be able to show us how they're gonna be able to handle that and how they're gonna plan for it. And of course, inclement weather plan, if there's gonna be a thunderstorm nearing, coming in unexpectedly, or some type of hurricane or tornado, they need to be able to show us how they're able to coordinate with the different agencies within the city to make sure that the word gets out and to be able to provide a safe environment for individuals. And then the last one is how the event will be promoted, social media, radio, TV ads, et cetera. We need to know what their plan is, because the more you promote a program, the more you publicize an event that brings large crowds to the park, and so we need to know what that number will be consist of based on the social media outlets. And then the permit is to require special event insurance to cover damage to the park. We're asking for that individual to provide us with not only their liability insurance, but to create some type of special event insurance. That special event insurance will help us offset some of the costs if there's damage to the park provided by that end user. And then, the permit will be routed to various departments such as PD, FMO, EMS, to get their approval and their buy-in to make sure that the special event that's held at the park is covered for an emergency situation, inclement weather, and to make sure the event layout is suitable for security.
James, for the benefit of council, a number of these items are currently within the requirements for special events already. So, for instance, we do, when there's Texas Music Fest or other big events at the park, some of these very same items are taken into consideration. This is just formalizing that a little further.
Yes, putting this into, again, the special event permit. Next thing I'd like to do is talk about the current pricing, and I'll bring up Michael, who is our assistant director, and he did the research to try and find out what these, what rates are occurring in other cities, and so he'll run you through the information that he found during the rate increase.
Good evening. All right, so for some of this pricing, it's just, you know, what we currently charge, what other cities, government entities around us charge, and kinda compare, you know, the two together. So, our current pricing, like Mr. Tony said earlier, is the same as, you know, a family wants to rent, you know, the pavilion for a birthday party, we kinda have those same fees which we've done in the past. Currently, for nonprofit groups, we just charge a $200 deposit, no fee, so they get that full deposit back as long as there's no damage. So, and that's $200 deposit per facility, such as they rent the gazebo, that's $200. The large pavilion or the small rotary pavilion, each one of those is $200 each. For our resident rate, it's a $200 deposit per the facility and a $75 fee, and the non-resident rate is $200 deposit per facility and a $175 fee. So, like Mr. Tony said, there were a few cities that didn't allow special events, such as Angleton, and, you know, League City didn't have anything over 400 people. Alvin, they had a per-hour rate, and these are just kind of daily rental rates. So, if somebody wanted to rent a Saturday and Sunday, you would kinda double these prices. So, Alvin for their nonprofit fees, $480 for 12 hours. Their resident fee, $480 for 12 hours, so it goes across the board, and then just a $500 deposit. City of Pearland, their nonprofit fee is $600. Their resident fee is $1,200, and their non-resident fee is $1,800, with their deposit only being $500. Galveston County, they do theirs based off of the number of people that are scheduled to attend their event, which we understand that it's just an estimation, but with the special event permit application, we're hoping to gather more information, such as, oh, we've got ABC 13's gonna be covering our event. Okay, well, if you say you're having, you know, 300 people at the event, but ABC 13's covering it, obviously, we're gonna try to gather more information to make sure that we get appropriate pricing. So, for Galveston County, 300 to 500 people, it's $345 for the fee. This is for nonprofits. 501 to 2,000, $575. 2,001 to 5,000, $700, and basically over 5,700 as their fee. Their resident fee is the same as their nonprofit. Their non-resident fee is, goes from $700 all the way up to $1,400 for just their fee, and their deposit goes from $200 to $2,700 if you have over 5,000 people. Harris County, their fee is $430 regardless, with a $280 deposit. City of Galveston has a $200 fee with a $1,000 deposit. So, as you can see, you know, some of these kinda flip whether they're more in tune to collecting more of a deposit and less of a fee, or more of a fee and less of a deposit. So, based from, based from the information, we kinda put our heads together as a department and put some pricing together just as a suggestion. Obviously, we want city council to give the information and suggest, and we'll move whatever direction that you guys decide. But if our attendance is less than 250 for nonprofit, we start at $150, and then as it goes up, you know, if you have, expecting 3,000 or more, the nonprofit fee would be $500. For-profit is $250 starting out, all the way up to $1,000, so almost doubling the price. And then the deposit would be $600, and then we decided to go up to $2,500 to help cover our deductible. Main reason for that is, obviously, we'd look at getting special event insurance, and sometimes, you know, there's fights back and forth between whether their insurance company's gonna cover the damage or not cover the damage, or making sure we got appropriate pictures. So, just to cover the basis, that was our suggestion, was for that deposit for the $2,500 to help cover that. This kinda just shows you price comparison from... This kind of just shows you price comparison from, you know, just from the suggestion based off of what you've already seen. So our nonprofit fee would be less than Pearland, close to what Alvin is charging and what Harris County is charging. And then, but obviously, you can see our deposit is a little bit higher once you go to the larger number of people.
I'd like to ask a quick question. Say the farmer's market, they are there all day, but they never have probably more than 200 people show up, but that it's all day long. There's some people that come in the morning, they're doing their thing, there are probably about 70 or 80 people there. But all day, there might be 300 or 400 people that show up. Or it's four hours, okay. Are we charging them based on the total amount of people that show up there? Or is just the load that's happening at a particular time?
So that's a great question. So the farmer's market currently is using the parking lot and not the park. So this would just be large events in the park, basically grass, you know, things that are using the park itself. Farmer's market is strictly just the parking lot. So theirs is a little bit different.
There is one in the park that's there on Saturdays. Your wife's there almost all the time. What is it? But what is it? What is it?
It's a farmer's market.
This is a farmer's market?
But they moved it, they moved it.
Oh, they moved it?
Yeah, they used to be, correct. Now they're twice a month. It used to be once a month.
Come on, man, it's first Saturday of the month.
A couple of questions here. How many large events in the last couple of years have had damage in excess of their deposit?
I would say, I know of two.
Yes, there is at least three. Just recently, Ardena Park was in the, had their last year event, and there was significant damage to the drive coming into Stevenson Park. So that expense cost us about $10,000 to repair the drive coming in.
And then if an event had suitable insurance to cover the difference between what, you know, TML would cover and our insurance cover, if they came in with, you know, such insurance saying, hey, we got insurance that'll cover any damage, would that lessen the need to do the deposit, you think, or not?
Certainly a possibility. We're open to any suggestions that council may bring forward to us, so.
I got two more real quick questions. What about city-sponsored events? Santa in the Park, Fourth of July, what about damage during those, and how does that handle?
It'll be handled through city funds.
And through city insurance.
And through city insurance.
Okay, but if there's damage that's less than what TML covers, then we're going to, we got to cover that too?
We would have to cover the deductible.
One last question. You mentioned that you were going to have a process that had three or four city departments got to review each permit. Can one department out of the whole group nix it? I mean, it's got to go through each one, and you have to get everybody to approve, and if one guy doesn't, then it's a goner?
Well, we'll take it back to the end user and ask them to make those corrections that that department may suggest. PD may say, hey, it's going to require, you know, X number of officers. And, you know, in order for us to do that, then this group is going to have to do XYZ. So we'll bring that back to that end user and have them make adjustments on their permit application plan.
Provided there's not a conflict with scheduling, there's nothing that the city would do to deny the permit. Simply put, there would be requirements that they would have to provide additional officers or improve their parking plan, or the evacuation, or whatever the case may be. But there isn't anything fatal within the permit process that would keep the event from taking place.
Is that deposit refundable?
Yes.
I have two questions on the actual application, which, let me start off with a lot of what you're asking for for Texas Music Fest, which last year is the first year we had it in the park, was pretty much everything we were already doing. So no real big issues. But I did see on the application, the layout, a request for the layout 90 days in advance, three months in advance. How detailed a layout are y'all talking about? Because I know, because of events like Santa in the Park and Fourth of July, y'all know it's very fluid right up until you're almost on there, so, on the date. So how detailed are you looking? What kind of detail are you looking for in that layout? Because you all sat in our meetings with us, all of our committee meetings too, so does volunteer fire and EMS and PD. We got all the city folks involved in those meetings. So hopefully good communication.
Right, and those details were great. You know, we knew where everything was going to be located. That way, if, you know, if we got a phone call, you know, where's this going to be, where's this going to be, we could help answer questions. We just want to be better informed. I think, you know, this permit application has been long overdue. You know, we've had several groups that are calling, and, you know, and so, of course, if they see a park in the event, who do they call? They call us, you know, and so normally like, oh, well, you need to call that number, you know, so, you know, we can now better inform the public if they call instead of, you know, routing them back to them, you know, and as well as knowing exactly what's going to entail in that event. Now, you know, I'm not going to say, okay, well, you know, are you going to have 15 tables under this one tent, you know, at this location, you know, 10 feet by 10 feet from this certain tree? No, we're not going to ask that, but, you know, in a general facility of, you know, you know, what is the park layout going to be? You know, where are you going to have EMS located? You know, where are you going to have the stage located? And that way, we can approve that and say, okay, well, we don't want people driving on this location. Or we, you know, that way we can help answer questions. And it's more to help us as well as, you know, you say, well, we're going to have, you know, a moving truck come in to deliver the stage. Okay, well, that's good information. No, this is where you can access the park. This is where you can drop it off. This is where you can't do those things, so.
Well, that's why it was so beneficial to have y'all sitting in on our committee meetings. And we appreciate y'all taking the time for that. But my question is, I saw in the application, it's 90 days before. So are you kind of looking high level, 90 days? Because as y'all know, it's kind of fluid up until a week or two before the event.
Correct, yeah. We will certainly be flexible with the end user. Yes, 90 days gives them enough time so they can effectively plan their program and their event. And of course, we will continue like we've done in the past, sit in with that end user and make the adjustments as it becomes closer to the event based on weather, based on, you know, park conditions. And so that's something that we've always proud ourselves in doing, helping the end user make sure they have a successful event in the park.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it worked out very well this past year. It was our first year. We were all learning, of course. My other question is, I noticed that it says that the city can supersede this reservation if you've got your permit going on, and the city can supersede that. So that's not something we would really enact, is it? I mean, because once you, a lot of these events, as y'all know, Fourth of July, you plan for 12 months. So I'm talking about, it's item 10 is about the layout, and item 11 is about the city being able to preempt. Is that possible, seriously?
For example, if, you know, there was a hurricane and we had to make proper preparations, we're going to say, we're going to cancel your event. We need to, you know, stage equipment in the park. You know, for example, there's a hurricane coming. So it's more of.
Would that be a natural disaster? Maybe we can specify that in number 11? It's just a little frightening that if you spent nine or 10 months planning an event, and then the city says, oops, we're going to have such and such here. Hurricane's a whole different ballgame. But can we work on the wording on that so it doesn't scare people that they think their event could be trumped by a higher calling from the city? That's, thank y'all, I appreciate that. Those are all my questions.
Do we currently charge or ask people to buy large event insurance? Is that something required now?
We do.
So Art in the Park and all those chamber, other groups that are renting it and having large events, they're providing insurance?
Well, they provide, they provide their liability insurance and name the city as an additional insurer. We haven't gone so far as to specifically ask for event insurance. And that's kind of one of the changes we'd like to make, to make sure that that individual provides event insurance for that particular day so that we could cover any damages that may occur from the event.
Okay, I like that idea. I know they do that with the PTOs and stuff and carnivals.
If I may, when you're having it off-site, we had to do that. We had to name them as covered, so named in your liability. So it's nothing different than off-site would require.
Yeah. I remember when these two ladies came and visited me 11 years ago when they first had this idea. And I've watched it grow, and it benefits our city and things in our city in many different ways. Unfortunately, they haven't evolved yet or grown yet to having large sponsorships. So it's a lot of individuals, farmer's market is the same way. So people get great ideas in our city, and they start something, and they're funding it and working really hard. And I want to be supportive of that, and I want to protect the city too and our resources. But I also want to be supportive of those people that are enhancing our city by coming up with these great ideas for community events and haven't gotten the sponsorships, you know. And I know how hard it is to get those sponsorships, because there's a lot of different groups asking for them in a small city. So I want to be real careful in that. I don't have a problem with large deposits or fees for non-residents or groups that are outside of Friendswood. But when it's a nonprofit supporting Friendswood, and the proceeds stay in Friendswood and go back to enhance things in Friendswood, I want to be real sensitive to that. And, because some people are writing personal checks to cover those deposits and fees. And I don't know, do we ever see how much that profit is? Do they ever tell us how much their profit is? Could that be something that we ask for in determining maybe how much would be reasonable for us to be asking for?
We can, but much like anything else, there has to be some level of, I don't want to say a full-blown audit, but verifying what's turned into the city. We've seen this in building permits, for instance, where a home will be valued at X prior to the change in state law in order to have permit fees set at a certain point, and then it goes out on the market three times that, so.
So I'd just like to ask, historically, you know, year-on-year, how much has come out of y'all's budget to perform maintenance on facilities? Just in average, not, you know, $10,972 last year, but on average, year-over-year, what is it typically that you guys have to come, that the city taxpayers have to come out of their pocket to pay for these damages? Do you know?
We don't have an exact number, and again.
I didn't ask for an exact.
And it depends on the type of damage that has occurred in the parks.
Yeah, so let's just say over the last five years of managing your budget, you've on average had to come out of your budget $15,000 to repair parks every year, on average? Obviously, some years are 2,000, some years are 20,000. Is it 15,000 annually? Is it 10,000 annually? Is it?
I would say somewhere between the 5 and 7 range.
Okay, okay.
And that's exclusively for large events, or is that for just use of the park?
That's use of the park, because it's large events as well as.
Well, it can be any event, right? I mean, a junior high football game, somebody can go in there and rip a urinal off the bathroom wall, and we have to pay for it. I get that. I get that. So I'm just trying to get a picture of how much and how frequently these damages are, okay? So I think that's an important estimate to have in place when we start determining fees and deposits. On the flip side of that, I agree 100% that if that number is significant, we need to be charging the event holders to cover those costs. And they should put down deposits to cover those costs. Because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers of this community's parks. It's not, and it doesn't matter if it's a nonprofit or for-profit, if it's a local resident or a non-resident. In a big event on your scale of 3,000 plus, that's still less than 10% of the population in this community. But we're never going to have more than 10% of the population, hardly at any event, even the Texas Music Fest, which is phenomenal. So I think when you're asking all of the taxpayers of the community to foot a bill of $20,000 to repair a park, that that's somewhat negligent on our part. I think that that cost should be incurred by the event holder. So I'm in lockstep with you on that. I just think when it comes to how we get to the fee and the deposit, it would be best for me personally to have an understanding. I don't think it, it shouldn't take you long to be able to come to the next meeting and say, you know, in '18, we spent $7,300. In '17, we spent $12,500. And let's go back and see if we can historically pull those numbers out and say, year-on-year, we're averaging, you know, $8,500 out of our budget to repair these parks. If we initiate this fee structure, we'll break even. And if it's an average, it's an average. You know what I mean? And I'd be happy with that. So I'm behind you. And I think, I think the large majority of the taxpayers in our community would support that the event holder be the one to pay for the damages, not the citizens who pay taxes in this community. So I support your idea, but I think we need to know historical data, year-over-year, for like the last seven years on how much we've spent out of your budget, which has not gotten a bump in money, I recognize, how much you're having to come out of your budget to do things that you shouldn't be, the taxpayers of this community shouldn't be responsible for fixing. So that's all I've got.
And remember, there's money in your budget for the normal wear and tear maintenance on the park. We all get that. There's some level that you guys are going to spend every year to repair just joggers, you know, going around the path, you know, there's a repair there that requires money. But we are, we're all talking about the over and above that shouldn't have to be shared with all the taxpayers in the city, you know. And Art in the Park has kind of got a bright light on them, because last year, you guys allowed some big heavy truck to come in, and it did $10,000 worth of damage to that sidewalk over there. And I don't know if you guys are letting that guy come back in this year, or you're going to watch him real close or what. But, you know, hey, you know, we had some damage, and it's a hit to the budget to have to, you know, cough that up. So I'm agreeing with everybody that's talking up here, and with your ideas, your proposal, that we somehow recoup the cost of these. And whether or not it's, hey, everybody that has a large event puts down $2,500 because that's what our TML deductible is, maybe that's fair, you know. And granted, if you have these organizations put down a big chunk of money, they're going to be more intent on making sure that, hey, you know, walk with that guy that's got that 12-ton truck, you know, driving on our sidewalk, and make sure he doesn't go to the edge and break them. So, or, you know, the other idea that came up was make them take out a policy that will at least pay our deductible, and maybe we could help them with that. Maybe the city has an insurer that we could, you know, charge the fee to them for the policy, but we, you know, could streamline the process, because we're going to be doing it more often than Art in the Park. They might be doing it once a year, but we might be doing it four times a year for different events. So anyway, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think there's definitely a solution here we can come to, and we can keep from having to tap into your budget every time, James. Anything else?
I had just one quick. When you said the $10,000 cost on the one event, was that actually $10,000 you lost, or was that towards an insurance claim? Like, did a deductible cover?
Yeah, no, we actually made the repairs out of the tune of $10,000.
Okay, so would that, if you had insurance on that, then that's something, obviously, that would have been covered. But it's also going to drive up your insurance cost if it keeps happening too, or your premiums are going to keep going up.
Yeah, I mean, one thing you have to understand is, you know, the most maintenance that we'll do after each event is, you know, rut control and going in there with sand, manpower, you know, afterwards. It's almost after every, you know, large event that we do. Yes, that's part of our maintenance, but, you know, but of course, you know, if the event did not exist, that manpower would have been used somewhere else, and that, the cost for sand and cost for other items, you know, fuel for the truck to go pick up, I mean, everything, yes, I mean, it wouldn't be there. But, you know, we're just, you know, trying to do what's fair.
It's a balancing act. We don't, I mean, we don't want to run every event out of Friendswood, right? The city has a tremendous benefit in everything. So, you know, in all of these, whether it's a farmer's market, or Art in the Park, or whatever. So, you know, but we have to find a balance there where the event holder is covering costs for damages that are incurred by the event. I think it's only fair.
I just want to actually agree with that point. Just, when you come back to us, please, you know, think about flexibility for events that may not be overburdened with money or have had a good history of performance or whatever. You know, just like John said, we really want to encourage these events to stay, and then, you know, and make sure that we're all covered, so.
You got enough, Mo?
I think, and I think the reason you're stating too that you need the media coverage and such is we're, like Sally was talking about the 90-days-out plan. I guess if the media coverage does start, then do you come back and, is there a check-in point where, I mean, I know like with y'all's event, they probably checked in more often, but if it's an outside event, do they come back to you two, three weeks before the event? but if it's an outside event, do they come back to you two, three weeks before the event, "Hey, we need this now," or, so y'all can plan for that?
Yeah, we stay in constant contact with that end user leading up to their actually event date. Weather changes, we may have to start talking about their Plan B. So yeah, we'll stay in constant communication.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Sounds good. We're going to take a little short break, come back at 7:00, and kick it off with our, what do we call it, public hearing. All right, item six, public hearing. To receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding zone classification change request for 43.0673 acres of land, more or less, being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract described as Track A, as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, to change from single-family residence SFR to multifamily residential Garden Home District MFR GHD. Aubrey, good evening.
Good evening. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held our public hearing on Thursday, October 17th, and the vote from the commission was three to three, so it's a negative recommendation. We require four positive votes to approve an item. The primary reason for opposition was that the location and characteristics of the property don't meet the general intent of the Garden Home District as defined in the zoning ordinance. And primary reasons for supporting approval of this zone change was that the smaller lots would provide additional lot size and price range options for potential home buyers who want to live in Friendswood but prefer the lower maintenance requirements of smaller lots and/or lower home prices of homes built on smaller lots.
Thank you. Can I see at least three P&amp;Z commissioners? Mr. Sasson, Mr. Matranga, Mr. Banfield? Am I missing any? Thank you guys for coming and support. So, that being said, any citizens in this public hearing want to speak against this zoning change? Any citizens want to speak for this zoning change? Okay. That covers that item. Thank you. Communication from the public, item seven. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular city council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. One card. James McGarvey.
And I'm the referee, so when you get a yellow card, you got one minute left, and a red card, you're done.
That should be relatively simple and straightforward. So I basically wanted to ask of city council that you consider, in the immediate aftermath of tomorrow's vote, which I believe will get some votes, that we provide some sort of binding assurance about the exact nature and type of flood mitigation that will be accomplished with the funds, hopefully approved by the bond. This should help put to rest the minds of many of my fellow citizens, myself included, who find that the lack of specificity of the bond language provides a sense of unease. Now, it's the eve of the election. I don't know that anything can be done now, but I would ask that in the aftermath, that the city council consider putting forward some sort of binding resolution identifying what specifically the funds will be used for, in a broad sense, but defining the types and character of that mitigation. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Item eight, city managers' report.
Mayor and council, as I was asked before this item, to be brief, I will be as brief as possible. This is obviously one of the longest city manager's reports going through item H that I've had in a number of months. This upcoming Saturday is the American Heart Association Annual Bay Area Heart Walk. We participated last year. This event takes place on the Kema Boardwalk, Saturday morning, November 9th. The intent is to raise awareness to fight against heart disease. We had a number of residents and employees walk last year, and we hope to have similar turnouts. If you're interested in participating or joining the heart walk, the team name is Friendswood Also taking place this Saturday is our annual Fall Hall over at Centennial Park. I mentioned this during last month's city manager's report. This event is open from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and will provide residents the opportunity to dispose of non-hazardous materials, as well as provide items for a garage sale to benefit Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Ultimately, the funds raised from the garage sale will be put back to maintaining and improving our park system. No hazardous waste will be accepted. We will offer paper shredding from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM for those that are there in that time period. This upcoming Thursday, November 7th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we will host our annual Veterans Day luncheon over at the Senior Activity Building on Morning Side, 416 Morning Side. We ask that folks that are interested, please come and join us in thanking our veterans for their service to our country and remembering those that have since passed. It'll take place again November 7th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Coming up, December 7th, we will have our annual Flapjack Fun Run at Stevenson Park. It'll take place from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. This is a Kids K for kids 12 and under, and also a 5K, which, starting at 8:15. Folks that sign up for the race will be given a delicious pancake breakfast, hence the name Flapjack Fun Run, and will receive other goodies for their participation. We typically have a great turnout for these events, and we encourage folks that are interested, are avid runners, to please join us for the fun run. Also coming up later this month, on November 23rd, Saturday, we will have our annual Blue Santa Shout-Out Softball Tournament and Toy Drive. This is a softball tournament intended to raise, or receive donations for the annual Blue Santa program, intended to help those less fortunate families, kids mainly, to have a present for Christmas timeframe that wouldn't otherwise receive it. Teams must register by November 19th, and it's open to adult co-ed and men's D divisions for softball, Saturday, November 23rd. Also taking place is the Friendswoods Annual Food Drive in support of Mary Queen Food Pantry. It's running this entire month of November. Folks are encouraged to bring non-perishable, non-expired food items to the lobby of the Friendswood Library and receive up to $5 of their fines being waived at the library. So for the council members that have the biggest fines, I'd encourage you to bring all the non-perishable items you can, you can. Text dot. Earlier this evening, you received comments related to a large oversized vehicle traveling through Friendswood. I will state that despite the oversized load being permitted, text dot themselves stopped the route due to logistical issues with FM 518. It was not the City of Friendswood or our police department. The route unfortunately decided to come through Friendswood down 2351 in the midst of rush hour traffic, causing delays of great, in excess of an hour, causing us to call in midnight shift early so that we can provide detours for those motorists trying to get home at the end of the day. There was one reported incident of someone's Astro's feed being cut in the midst of this, and they weren't happy. We got a call about it the very next day. We had another oversized load scheduled to come through this past weekend, and then one come through again today, and it did go down 528 today. As this is becoming more commonplace, I mentioned to council last week that these type of loads are not permitted by the City of Friendswood. Rather, they're permitted through the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, and they're blessed by the Texas Department of Transportation. Unfortunately, a number of times, these routes are blessed by simply reviewing paper plans, and no one physically driving the route to verify the validity or the feasibility of these routes. As you know, they cause quite a bit of impact to our daily commuters in and out of the community. And unfortunately, in the midst of rush hour traffic, either in the morning or the PM, or when school's letting out, it's not the ideal time to have traffic at a standstill for a number of reasons, not to mention for emergency response capabilities. Staff is evaluating the establishment of a curfew. Some cities have taken it upon themselves to limit the movement of these type loads to the evening hours, where there's less traffic on the roadways. If council is so inclined, we'd be happy to pursue such a curfew. Ultimately, we'd have to still defer to the Texas Department of Transportation and Texas Department of Motor Vehicles to adhere to our curfew, but if that is a desire of councils, we can definitely look into that. I see a lot of nodding of the heads. Okay. All right. Lastly, the Hurricane Harvey recovery. You heard earlier tonight the mention of tomorrow's bond election. For those that have not voted, I encourage folks to get out and vote. The city continues to move forward with our Hazard Mitigation Grant Program buyout application. Appraisals have just about been complete. We have not received them yet on the 26 homes that were on that, in that program. We are still waiting word on our flood mitigation acquisition through the Texas Water Development Board, and also another application that we're contemplating with them, as well as through the Community Development Block Grant Program to acquire some properties along Clear Creek in an effort to do some further shelving and terracing of Clear Creek, similar to what the Galveston County Consolidated Trains District is currently doing at 2351 and Clear Creek. Staff has met twice this past three weeks with Harris County Flood Control District on projects on the Harris County side of Friendswood, and is actively pursuing a potential partnership on some of those properties in the very near future. As those projects are formalized, we'll be bringing interlocal agreements to the city council for your consideration. And that's all I had.
All right. Thanks, Mo. Item nine, communication from committees and special reports. A is the annual report from senior citizens advisory committee chair Nancy Mastrofrancisco.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The goal of the Friendswoods Senior Citizen Program is to enrich the lives of the senior adults in Friendswood. We provide a variety of activities which promote health, well-being, and independence through recreation, creative activity, information, and fun. Social activity is very important because isolation is bad for our health. It's especially prevalent among senior citizens. Our socials are always well-attended, especially our holiday events, Valentine's Day Party, Go Texan Luncheon, Cinco de Mayo Luncheon, Mother's Day Tea, Memorial Day Celebration, Donuts with Dads, and our second annual Senior Citizens Day, Thanksgiving Potluck. And the building is always packed for our Veterans Day Luncheon, which, as Murad has mentioned, will be this Thursday. Our mayor, Mike Foreman, will be our master of ceremonies, and Dr. Greg Bonin, our representative to the Texas House, will also speak. Robert Grifon, our liaison, says he'll be there, and we hope that other members of council and city will be there too. We have a new Santa for our breakfast with Santa. He's one of our members, and he's already working on his beard, looking pretty good. Our favorite social activity is bingo. We played bingo 28 times last year. These are sponsored, they get gift cards, nice. That number does not include our Watermelon Bashin Bingo, the Spring Picnic and Easter Egg Hunt, and our Fall Picnic in October. We have bingo at all those, too. We endeavor to keep our minds sharp with other games, such as bridge, bongo, dominoes, mahjong, Mexican train, and canasta. Hand and foot continues to grow in popularity. It's amazing. We had four hand and foot tournaments this year. The AARP Smart Driver Course was offered three times this year. We appreciate the insurance discounts, but we especially want everyone to be safe on the road. You're welcome. We also have Bible study, Spanish, painting classes. Our crochet group has made more than 60 hats, lap blankets, and afghans, which have been donated to hospitals. And that's pretty good considering it's not a very large group. They put out a lot of crochet items. We are hearing progress from our recorder and ukulele classes that I mentioned last year, as well as a new beginning music class. They practice in the main room, so we all get to hear the progress. They're really doing very well. There are about 20 members in the group. They performed for us last December, and have also performed five times for local special needs and seniors groups, as well as at assisted living facilities this year. They have more shows planned for the rest of the year, of course, during the holidays, they do a lot of shows. Learning to play a musical instrument keeps our minds active, and sharing their new skills with others is a very rewarding experience. The classic cloggers have performed 18 times for groups in the community and have more performances planned for this year. It's a wonderful aerobic exercise for the body and great for the mind. There are about 20 members in that group also. We also have a beginner and advanced line dancing classes. One of our tap dancers is a former Radio City Rockette who is 98 years old. As a Rockette, Jackie was part of a very large USO camp show that entertained World War II troops in Europe. She still loves to dance. The 98-year member, 98-year-old member that I told you about last year is also still active with our program. Our three weekly exercise programs are still very well-attended. These are our largest regular classes. We also offer yoga and chair yoga, Zumba Gold, and a fitness room. Our twice-weekly Tai Chi classes have remained at the library due to space limitations in our building. Chair volleyball continues to be a very popular activity, exciting for participants and audiences. I've heard a rumor that certain city employees who used our facility after Harvey are still talking about this chair volleyball games. There were guest speakers on topics such as Medicare and veterans' benefits, insurance, dealing with stress, hearing health, stroke and rehabilitation, self-compassion, cooking classes, and a Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Series called Fresh Start to a Healthier You. Our bus is used to provide transportation to and from our building, monthly shopping trips, and out to lunch or breakfast for our members who are not able to drive. We also used it for about 30 field trips last year. We toured the National Museum of Funeral History, Lone Star Flight Museum, the Christmas Lights in downtown Houston and River Oaks, Old Town Spring, and the Grand 1894 Opera House in Galveston. It was a very interesting to tour backstage and learn about the history of that building. We attended two Astros games, a Little Day Music at Worthing Theatre, and the Houston Rodeo. Other tours were the National Weather Service in Dickinson, and the Butler Longhorn Museum in League City, where we learned about Milby Butler's role in saving the iconic longhorns from extinction, and we saw a lot of memorabilia. We also learned that having longhorns is not the only requirement to be a real longhorn. Trips were made to the Kema Boardwalk, the Houston Zoo, Ocean Star Offshore Drilling Rig and Museum, Bishop's Palace in Galveston. We attended Dance: Moving Myths at the Miller Outdoor Theater, and the Bay Area Harbor Playhouse, where we saw Disaster: The Musical, which is just about like it sounds. It was hilarious. A total of 10 trips were made to Pasadena Hometown Opera and Alvin Opry, and we enjoyed a performance at the Bay Area Bluegrass Music Festival in League City. We really like our music. We made three trips to Cachada this year. 26 cruisers enjoyed a seven-night Western Caribbean cruise to Cozumel, Grand Cayman, and Jamaica. A seventh cruise has been planned for January 2020. It will be a seven-night Western Caribbean cruise to Cozumel, Belize, and Mahogany Bay on Isla Roatan. 28 seniors went on a three-day trip to San Antonio, where we toured the San Antonio Shoe Factory, SAS Shoes, and bought shoes, of course. Nice discounts. We toured the city and its historic missions with a tour guide, ate dinner on a river cruise, and visited Green. I always knew that wasn't pronounced like it was spelled. Special events include our two fundraisers, a spaghetti luncheon in March, and a barbecue lunch in June. These fundraisers help to support our activities. Other special events included a health fair, casino extravaganza, and our Christmas in September craft market. We have gained 121 new members this year, giving us 846 enrolled members. On our average monthly attendance is 1,370. We're seeing results from listing our events in the local paper, the library marquee, and Facebook posts being shared by the Parks and Recreation Department. Online signup for trips began last December and seems to be working very well. Anyone who's at least 50 years old is welcome to join the fun. Check out our bi-monthly newsletters and calendars that are posted on the city website and are available at the Activity Building and the library. We appreciate the community's support and want to thank our local businesses that generously support and contribute the- that generously support and contribute the success of many of our events. Our classes are all taught by volunteers, and we appreciate their time and dedication. We're always looking for people to share their talents with us. Most of all, we would like to thank the staff of the Senior Citizens Program, Jeannie Balderez, Senior Program Manager, and our two new staff members, Shadei Caravelo Saldana, Assistant Senior Program Manager. She's here tonight, and Reese Woodard, our Recreation Aid. They are enthusiastic and do an outstanding job under the leadership of Michael Boyett, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thanks, Nancy. Annual report from the Historical Society, given by David Smith. Evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff, city secretary. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening to provide you with the report from the Friendswood Hysterical Society, supported by some historical figures. Or should I say, the Friendswood Historical Society, supported by some hysterical figures? Either way, I think it probably works. So, as you know, most of the time Anne Whittaker provides this report on an annual basis to council and to the public. And she explained to us recently that she took a fall. We're pretty convinced that Harold pushed her off a ladder, but we can't prove it. So, she's not with us because she's still recovering, and we wish her well. But she does send her formal greetings to you and thank you for everything that you do. I'd like to tell you a little bit, for the public's benefit, what the Historical Society has been doing this past year and give you an idea of what it will continue to do. Our main charge is providing historical information to our citizenry. And we do that by and large through our buildings and our museums and the information that we provide and the outreach programs that we do. So, we take care of the Perry House and the Brown Museum and the ancillary buildings that go along with it. So, the care of those facilities is always an ongoing endeavor, taking care of them, maintaining them, keeping them insured, which is a significant expense that we go to every year. And we've done the same thing this past year with the Perry House and with the Brown Museum, with the barber shop and with the barns. So, we made repairs to some of the problem areas that the buildings had, replacing rotted wood, changing light bulbs out to LEDs to reduce the power bill and to take care of the place. Made gate repairs. And one of the significant improvements that was made to the Brown Museum this past year was, in part thanks to the Lions Club, we were able to extend the deck that runs from the museum over to the Klein Barber Shop, giving easy access, an easier way for folks to be able to walk around that. And so, we want to thank the Lions Club for their help with that. We still have some additional things to do. There is additional rotted wood and window repairs that need to be done. But those will be ongoing projects that we'll keep you informed of in the future. On the Perry House in particular, I want to let you know we had to replace a heating unit this past year. That was taken care of. We also did an ozone treatment on the interior to knock out some of the mustiness. You can imagine that that house is not built to the same standard that our homes are, so it's not exactly airtight. So, it can get a little musty in there. And we have a lot of artifacts, historical pieces, in that area. So, we're trying to button that up and take care of them as best that we possibly can. There is more work that will need to be done there. But one of the things that we were very pleased that happened this past year that came as part of an Eagle Scout project was the reworking of the sidewalk that leads up to the... And so, we want to say thanks to our scout and our scout programs for helping us with that. Some of the staples that we'll continue to do is our programs that we provide that brings awareness to the museums, to the buildings, and to the programs. For instance, our ice cream socials that we host every year. Also, the front porch series, which is kind of the kickoff to our concerts in the park during the summertime. And lastly, I want to invite all of you to the kickoff for our holiday season, which will be December the 3rd. It's the first Tuesday in December. Every year, we will have our Christmas tree lighting. So, Santa will be there for kids to say hello and to take pictures. We'll have some wassail, and we'll light up the tree and get started with our holiday season. So, again, from Anne and from all of our members at the Hysterical Society, thank you for your support and appreciate you giving us the time to come and visit with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, David. Thanks for doing what you do to take care of our historical buildings. Item 10, discussion and possible action. A, discussion and possible action regarding approving a contract with Friendswood Historical Society in the amount of $15,000 for the maintenance and preservation of historical sites in the city and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item B, discussion and possible action regarding adopting the updated appointment policy. I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Morad, you want to...
Council, last month during the workshop, we talked about some minor changes to the appointment policy, changing the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings from the first and third Thursdays to the second and fourth Thursdays to reflect the single public hearing. There was mention of changes to the zoning board of adjustments, which did not take place when we discussed it with EBOA. They weren't interested in adding some additional permanent members. And then, some other ministerial-type changes, adding an additional position to keep Friendswood beautiful. But that was the extent of the changes.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Okay. See, discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the interlocal agreement between Galveston County and the city of Friendswood for the 2017 road bonds. Can I get a motion? Motion and a second. Morad, again, do you want to...
Yes, sir, and I'll be brief. Council may recall, in April of 2000 and May of 2018, we entered into an interlocal agreement with Galveston County for the construction of Friendswood Lake Boulevard, where it currently dead-ended, near North Eagle Creek, south to where West Ranch built their section of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. This was a result of the 2017, November 2017, Galveston County Road Project Bonds. The county included within their bond program 3.57 million. City of Friendswood offered to put up $1 million towards that project if the county would match it with an additional million, bringing the total funding for the project up to 5.57 million. This agreement with Galveston County is for the construction of the roadway. We had a separate agreement with the joining landowners, known as a development agreement, for them to contribute right-of-way for the roadway, as well as to donate $200,000 per project for a total of $600,000 towards this overall endeavor. Since our interlocal agreement was approved by Galveston County, there's been a need for an amendment to it to include the extension of water and sanitary sewer lines in conjunction with this effort to make sure that while we're out there, let's go ahead and put these facilities in so that it's most efficient. We're nearing completion of the design. I believe that it's at 95% and hope to have it bid out here within the next three to four weeks timeframe with a contract left for construction in January or February of next year. Until the project's actually bid, I can't tell you how much it's going to cost, obviously, but we hope to be within budget.
Great. Any discussion? Questions?
Yes.
Need to approve it yet? All in favor? Now we approve it. All right, item 11, Resolutions, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Following Resolution Number R 2019-33. A resolution of the city of Friendswood to support the Galveston Bay Estuary Programs, the Galveston Bay Plan, Second Edition, Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan for the Galveston Bay Ecosystem.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second.
Just a brief background, Mayor and council. This program is an initiative that's undertaken by a number of agencies, including Houston-Galveston Area Council, as well as our Gulf Coast Authority, who manages and operates our wastewater treatment plant on Bay Area Boulevard. This is not intended to add any additional layer of environmental regulation. In fact, it only re-enumerates what we're already obligated to follow, both from the EPA as well as the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. In essence, any discharges, whether sanitary or storm sewer, should not be illicit to where it pollutes the receiving streams. This does not in any way, shape, or form inhibit drainage projects along Clear Creek that the city of Friendswood is pursuing.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Resolution Number 2019-34. Resolution of the city council, the city of Friendswood, Texas, approving a contractual agreement for dispatching services between Windsor EMS, Inc., and the city of Friendswood, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Mayor and council, this item, as well as an item under the consent agenda, is related to the dispatching agreement between the city of Friendswood and Windsor EMS. Previously... Well, let me back up. The area in question for this dispatching services is Harris County Mud 55, predominantly Heritage Park, just outside of Friendswood city limits. Friendswood currently dispatches for the Forest Bend Volunteer Fire Department, which provides the fire response services to this area. Previously, this area was served by Clemson Clear Lake Emergency Medical Corp. for EMS services. Unfortunately, that group is dissolving. And so, the Harris County Mud 55 executed a contract with Windsor to provide EMS services. Fortunately, they didn't have dispatch capabilities, and they looked to the city of Friendswood for assistance. I mentioned the item later on in the consent agenda. The services started October 1st, so the mayor had to sign it, and we're seeking your ratification of his signature later on tonight.
Okay. Any questions, discussion on that? All in favor? You guys are easy. Maybe. Okay, item 12, ordinances, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Following Ordinance Number T 2019-37. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 156.4717 acres located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential SFR and planned unit development, PUD 2019-11, to a revised planned unit development for residential development Avalon at Friendswood.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay. So, I've stated, you know, every time for nine years that the city of Friendswood has zoning ordinances and codes that we must adhere to. They're there for a reason. I think we muddy the waters when we start using PUDs to develop property in a manner in which it's already zoned to develop. So, real quickly, if you look in our zoning ordinances, which you can find on the web, under the PUD, it says, "In no case shall a PUD be used for the sole purposes of circumventing the intent of city ordinances or plans." Again, this is a single-family residential development, nothing else. It's not garden homes. It's not commercial property. It is single-family residential on property that's already zoned that way. See, the general purpose of the PUD districts are severalfold. To encourage unified design and development of tracts of land incorporating a variety of uses. There's a single use. Can't check that box. To accommodate innovation and development by modifying the city's land use and development regulations. Again, it is a single use that it's already zoned for. To provide for and protect public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. Can't check that box. To minimize negative impacts on developments, especially those related to drainage, environment, traffic, public service-related facilities. Can't check that box. To protect and enhance aesthetic and visual qualities of development. Doesn't fit. To provide development of sites in a suitable fashion when such development is restricted by such factors as location and shape. Doesn't fit. To promote economic development in accordance with the city's plans for such. This development is single-family residential development on single-family residential zoned property, where the city has a code and ordinance defining what the requirements are for single-family residential. It's 2.7 homes per acre. It's 11,600 feet per lot. That's laid out. It's specific. It fits this development. The problem is, is that because, even though none of those fit, we're allowing the developer to use a PUD, he's going to use 50, 55, 60-foot lots. I'm a business guy. I get it. If I have to put 270 houses on a piece of property, and I can get by by using a PUD so that a third of the property can remain as green space, yet counting the density requirement, and put all the homes on two-thirds, well, then I save money. And I make more money. And that makes more sense if I'm a business guy. If I'm a city guy, and I'm responsible for making sure that developers who come to us for developments are all treated by the same zoning documents, then we would never even have these discussions. So, we've got a single-family development going on as a single-family zoned piece of property, and we're going to allow that developer to use 50, 55, 65-foot lots. Yet, planning and zoning has already said that they, well, in a three-to-three tie, that a developer that is proposing single-family residential lots of 90 by 130 on all but 43 acres of his development, which is 194 acres, and putting smaller garden homes on 43 acres, didn't get approval. Well, I would say that if you go to the garden home section of the ordinance, the development for the garden homes doesn't fit. It doesn't provide a buffer from an existing or a future development. It doesn't meet any of the requirements there. So, it's very simple to govern when you apply the rules the same across the board. It's very easy. It's not our position... This is how this country has gotten into the shape that it is. We're not responsible or in a position to vote for those things that we like or that we think are attractive or that we think are a good fit. We're responsible for voting on the things as they apply to our ordinances. If we don't like our ordinances, we, as a governing body, are in the exact position, the perfect position, to go back and say, "We're going to change these requirements." That's what this governing body can do. But when we sit here and say that we're going to allow people to apply, to do a development which a piece of property is already zoned for, but we're not going to make them meet our ordinance requirements, in this case, as it pertains to lot size, well, then everything is gray. Which is why for nine years, we've turned down every developer but the Friendswood Trails since I've been up here. Because every developer's been told the same thing. This is our ordinance. I'm not doing any of this to, you know, to talk bad about the developer or what the developer's proposing or the landowner wants to see done with their property. That's not my axe to grind. I think every property owner should be able to try to get the best profit amount for their property that they're entitled to. And I don't think any governing body should get in that way. But when there's rules, you have to abide by the rules. And to me, it's that simple. And so, how anybody can read what the general definitions of the PUD are, justify allowing a development to be developed outside of the ordinance that it's already zoned for by using a PUD, I don't understand that. I don't know how... Yes, I get it. It's been stated before, we have a PUD. Every developer is authorized to apply for a PUD. Sure, they are. And it's black and white what you can use a PUD for. And you check the box. And when you check the box, you find out whether or not it applies. It doesn't apply. This development doesn't meet any of those. So, we arbitrate... This is how we get in trouble as a government, every level of government. We pick and choose what we like. Instead of applying the same rules evenly... We pick and choose what we like, instead of applying the same rules evenly across the I've said it. Everybody knows. Everybody is tired of hearing it, that's up here, listening to me say it. I just can't emphasize, for me personally, for what I feel the responsibility of me, as a member of the governing body, how important it is that we abide by the rules, and if we don't like the rules, then we engage in the process to modify them. If you want 55-foot lots to be the minimum lot size, then I'm all for us having a discussion and a vote to go do that. I'll vote against it, but we can still have that debate and go and change the lot size requirements. When you allow people to do it through a PUD, when the PUD says specifically, "You're not allowed to use the PUD for that purpose," you're defeating our rules. So now we have a guy that applied for a garden home zoning change, which he should do, if that's what he wants to do. But a garden home is, uh, says what it's used for, and it's nothing. It's, "May have limited suitability for residential development due to geographical limitations." Nope. "Have portions of the property subject to flooding." Nope. "Adjacent to a district of a different zoning designation for which the development as MFR-GHD would be appropriate as a buffer." So why doesn't he just go back and apply for a PUD? And then instead of 65% of the lots being 90 by 130, he can go put as many 55-foot lots on there as he wants, and leave the rest of it as green space. We have rules. They're there for a reason. We're not here to vote on those things that we like, or that we find attractive. We're here to find out whether those things meet our ordinances. And in this case, it doesn't. That's all I've got to say.
Well, I guess I'm going to jump on his bandwagon, too. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go over a couple of things under the general requirements and design criteria. "The subdivision shall conform to the comprehensive plan of the city, as well as all duly adopted design criteria of the city, which shall be kept on file with the city engineer and available to the public. The city engineer shall maintain the design criteria and propose such changes to them from time to time, so that they are equivalent or more stringent, equivalent or more stringent than those in the area, provided, however, city council may throw out the design criteria." Just chunk it out. You can now take the zoning book. I'd throw it out, too, but it's too heavy, and I didn't want to break the paper open or anything like that. Hurt my shoulder. But here we have, the city council can change the design criteria, they can change the book, the zoning book of ordinance by two ways: planned unit development, and I'd like to ask if we've already passed a specific use for this permit, a specific, a specific use permit for this PUD? I think that question needs to be answered. Because, because a PUD is a unique zoning qualification, and shall be granted only when the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council determine that the applicant has submitted a complete application containing sufficient detail. Well, I'm not sure what kind of a PUD this is. Is it of detailed, or is it of conceptual nature? I know the Exhibit B is of a conceptual nature. It's not a detailed design, design plan. And now, city council has thrown out the design criteria, it's thrown out the book of ordinances, and now we've become the ordinance writers. I've read through some of the things that we're requiring, but we now are going to let them build 65% of the house on a lot that's smaller, not 35% as, as is codified in our ordinance book. We're changing things up to allow for a planned unit development, where I actually commend the man who comes in here with a residential development called a garden home development, and it's codified in our book. The design criteria tells him exactly how to build it, exactly what to do, and he's already going to do it, I'm sure, with the minimum qualifications. He's not changing the standards, now that the city council and us have decided to change the councils under a planned unit development, but he's not doing that. He's coming up here, and he's saying, "I'm going to build this garden home development exactly how the city requires me to, and y'all can shoot me down or not shoot me down." But I'm telling you, we've got two different kinds of application, and I'm not even sure what kind of application that Avalon has submitted. But I will say this, I have been very hard on Connie Breakbill and her family, and Avalon, in that I have demanded that we should build single-family residential homes on 90-foot lots. I would be a low-life, sorry, no-good hypocrite if I turned around now and I said, "Okay, Sterling Builders, I'm going to allow you to build garden homes and not do it for Connie Breakbill." So I can't support that. I can't support that, and there's equally hypocrite
Point of order.
... with those.
Point of order. We're, we're talking about two different agenda items here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm talking about the PUD, but I do know that that
Talking about the garden homes, which is another
Okay, I'll, I'll address that, then. I do think that we are setting ourselves up for failure when we decide how we're going to write the ordinance. Now, each and of, every one of us up here are zoning engineers. We're going to have to decide, what is the open space? What is the, the proper drainage now? You say you're going to apply all the rules and regulations of the ordinance book, well, for which residents? We've got several of them here. We've got single-family residential, single-family residential estate, we've got moderate, we've got multifamily residential, and we've got garden homes. Are we going to apply garden home regulations to this new PUD? Are we going to apply single-family residential to this new PUD? Well, we can't, because they're not the same. They're different. So we're rewriting the ordinance book when we approve a PUD. We're all rewriting it, and we're all becoming engineers, and we're all becoming design, uh, profile, uh, criteria people. Where all of this has already been written for us, guys? And if there's people that are willing to build under the terms and conditions that we have already got in our zoning book of ordinances, in our design criteria manual, that we work hard to get into place, then let's not change it. Let them build under the terms and conditions of what we have in our book, and don't go planning a new unit development. That's my position.
Anybody else? Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Four to three. Ordinance number T 2019-41, first reading of an ordinance amending Section 30-84 and Section 30-118 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the International Fire Code and Life Safety Code respectfully, respectively.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Mayor and council, briefly, this item was discussed last month during a workshop. We're currently under the 2012 code, and it's a staff's recommendation to go to the 2018 codes for fire and life safety codes, namely, to be in compliance with the ISO criteria when they evaluate us for insurance requirements.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Ordinance number T 2019-42, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 43.0673 acres of land, more or less, being a portion of a called 194.21-acre tract, described as Track A, as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill, Country Ranching LLC, in clerk's file number 20, 20, I'm sorry, 201-005-9686. Can we make these numbers bigger? Of the Galveston County deed records, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, as more fully described herein, to change sim- symbol, uh, single-family residential SFR to multifamily residential garden home district.
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Good evening, Mr. Hill.
How are y'all?
Great.
Thank you for seeing us. So after all that, um, you know, I'm, I'm here to ask you to look at this thing, uh, this plat, as on its own merit, and look at the laws that you have just stated, and where you fit. And I understand, you might not think we fit all of them, but we fit a lot of them. So when we started Sterling Creek, we started with 90-foot lots, and we moved forward with that, the bond passed. We then got to see that the road's going to go, and we worked with the county and the city to get our tie-ins. So then we lay out the rest of our land. We lay out the land, and we end up with 90 and 100-foot lots, so we exceed the criteria in a lot of ways. And then we look at this lax, last section here, that we're looking to put 60 by 140-foot lots. So Councilmember Fawn, you talk about the garden home minimum is 6,000 feet. We're at 8,400 feet, so that allows homeowners to come in, build up to 5,000 feet if they choose, if we comply with the 60-40 rule, and then also have pools. These are deeper lots, so it brings, Councilwoman Scott, our density to 1.9 per acre. If we did all 90-foot lots, we're at 1.8 per acre. So we are well below your 2.7. So we, we qualify in a lot of ways. We would end up with 300 lots total if we did all 90 foot, or we do 282 lots if we add this section that's 60-foot. We abut a power line, not a power line, we abut a transmission line. I think that's a hardship. It may not fit in your category for garden home, but it does with me, in doing this business for 22 years, and trying to sell houses, and people looking at them and finding something. Our target price range is 500,000 for these lots. If you look at our current section at 650,000, the numbers match. So we're still putting in this last section, which I think is the only one we're talking about, $47 million on the tax rolls for the city, not to mention 18 more impact fees, 18 more sales tax, and all that it is, in my mind, the better use of the, uh, the land. I have stood up here and advocated for 90-foot lots for a long time, in a, in a very passionate way, as you guys did, and I appreciate that. I sit here today and tell you, in a humble way, this is the best use of that land. This is, this is what, what I think is best, and I, um, I feel like that if you look at the overall project, we're 65% 90-plus, 35% 60s. And overall, that, that exceeds a lot of the other guys around. There's a lot of garden homes districts, Autumn Creek, a lot of bigger houses over there. Works well. There are some, it's a garden home district, but they're not building what people think are the garden home houses. As far as drainage, we do not have a drainage issue, because we fixed it. South Eagle Creek, you could step across it. When we're done, it'll, will enhance all of the drainage district for San Joaquin and upstream. We're helping. This is on the Galveston County, uh, consolidated drainage district plan, has been for 10 years for them to come fix it. We're doing it as a developer. I understand the city is helping developers across the board. We're, we're both giving on that. We do have a small park up in the front that we're looking to do as a pocket park. All of our residents can walk around all of our ponds, they can enjoy everything. Nothing is excluded to Sterling Creek. So, you know, as we look at it from, from our perspectives, from a, from a heart perspective, I have multiple family members living garden homes around the city. I have family members that are growing up, having babies, and want to have a little bit bigger house. I have family members that have big houses, and they want a smaller one. This is a nice option. Again, we are still producing the 90 and 100-foot lots that no one else is doing, uh, at a vast percentage. But in this situation, this is the best use of the land that we believe, and that's why we come and ask for your vote.
Thanks, sir. Discussion?
Well, I just want to say, Adam, I commend you for coming to the planning and zoning in this council, not with a planned unit development, but with an actual residential development that's codified in our book, and it's in our design criteria. You're not throwing that away. You're actually using it, and instead of 6,000 square-foot lots, you're making them 8,400 square-foot lots, and you're putting them on at a 50% house to, uh, size of the lot? You're not doing 65% like, um, other subdivisions might be doing. You're following the rules and regulations of the residential development for garden homes in this smaller part of your development, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, like I said, I commend you for that. I've just been too vocal in the past in regards to 90-foot lots, that I just would feel hypocritical if I supported you on that, and I, and I couldn't do the same for Mr. Breakbill. So thank you for bringing
And there was only six planning and zoning members there. Had we had seven, we had a shot. I tried to flip a coin.
I don't, I don't understand what planning and zoning is doing, to tell you the truth. I really don't.
Trish?
Yes. So I've done a lot of research on this, because I am so new, and I appreciate the time that you gave me, Adam, and, and spent one-on-one. I really appreciate the time that Aubrey's given me, uh, over an hour and a half going through different things, the legal department, Mo, everyone, to tell me what we legally can do. Uh, I, I am sympathetic to trying to, to follow rules that we have on the book, but I also realize that that is the, um, we have that discretion to say yes or no on these things. Uh, I'm going to support it, um, for lots of different reasons, but, um, I am asking, and I have asked Mo, that we put this on as a workshop item in the future, so that we can discuss this, or see if we want P and Z to look at this again, on how this, these are written, uh, so it can be more consistent and avoid this kind of thing that we're going through the last few times. I did go back to history, though, to 1970, when the lot sizes were 70 feet, because I started asking the question, this is where I started, "Why do we have a 90-foot lot? Why is that ordinance there?" It's not a moral issue. It's not a right or wrong issue. So why do we have this? And I called people that served on council or in the city government many decades, I mean, several decades ago, to get different perspectives of what their recollection was. A lot of it was to limit growth. That was the number-one answer I got, was to limit growth, to slow down growth. That train has left that station. We're already, that's, that's gone. It's a different time today. So I think it's time to look at the needs of the market and our community, and the demographics of our community changing. I also, uh, looked at all the different subdivisions in our community that have smaller lot sizes. So I was under the impression that West Ranch was like the first, and then the Trails, you know, when they had requested it, they were like the second. That is not true. Uh, we have subdivisions all over this city with smaller lots than 90 by 130. And they may have fit some criteria, or they may have fit the criteria that was in place at the time. I don't know all of that history, but I do think that, I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Scott, uh, said about following what's on the books, but also appreciate the fact that we have that authority to make these decisions, and what we think is best for our community. But I do, do really want to suggest that this be on a future, uh, workshop, that we have the opportunity to discuss it.
Yes, ma'am.
Eve?
Adam, thanks for coming in front of us. I appreciate, uh, your candor on this, and I, I just want to say that I've always thought you were like the epitome of the best developer we could possibly have. What you build is gorgeous. He's, there's houses all over the city, and they're fabulous, and you have increased our tax base tremendously, which has been a benefit of all. And, uh, I think it's very interesting, uh, and I, and I appreciate you, you know, having come in a couple of years ago and really, you know, laid it to us about this, and now you, you come back, and I, I just want to point out, when we have all the things we've complained about, out, out-of-town developers and all that, coming in and doing, doing things wrong, we have a local developer that does great stuff, and he is telling us, "Yeah, can't continue to always have to have 90-foot lots. It doesn't work on these developments." And he's telling us the same thing that we heard from Avalon, and we've heard from others. I believe it. I believe it. So I, I'm going to support this as well.
Sally?
I, too, would like to say, I appreciate your time, one-on-one. I have been a proponent of versatility, variety of size of lots, counter to the 90-foot. I was on P and Z when the Trails came through, also the Whitcomb property, so there's been some other opportunities. And I would say that if I had my druthers, I wish that your smaller homes were closer to the road versus in the back, but with those power lines running through, I understand that, and I don't think folks are going to spend 3/4 to $1 million on a home when they got power lines or transmission lines in their backyard, so I get that. But I do think, and I think this need has been there for many years, we need garden homes, we need town homes, because there are folks who either are just getting started... We need town homes, because there are folks who either are just getting started, maybe can't afford the larger homes with larger lots, but I also know there's folks who don't want to leave town, like your folks and mine, who are still here, probably aren't gonna go anywhere, and they may not always want to keep up the large property with all the maintenance that's involved with that. So I appreciate that you're stepping out there and you're taking this on, because I do think we need to be able to offer this to our citizens. So thank you for what you're doing, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you.
One last comment, Mayor.
Trish.
P&amp;Z, thank you, Mayor.
Comment, number two.
P&amp;Z, well, they're short comments. P&amp;Z is doing a fantastic job, by the way. They're very thoughtful, very reflective, very smart people, so I want to compliment them for the job that they do, meeting twice a week in trying to deal with these issues.
You guys meet twice a week?
Twice a week. Twice a week for nothing.
Now, I want to thank you, Adam, for coming up here also. Like Trish, I'm still trying to learn some of this lingo on some of these zoning things, but I believe Councilmember Graffon did a good job of pointing out a few things that, while I was against the other development, I do think that you fit more into the box. And as Trish stated, I think we just gotta find a little more consistency going forward as we plan, and the world's evolving, our city's evolving, and like you said, you'd probably be the last person you would expect to be up here asking for this change, so I'm gonna support this also.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you all.
All right. Back to reading in public. Ordinance number T-2019-43, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 86 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood by amending Sections 86-30 through 86-34, amending the water conservation plan. Got to get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Renee, you gonna educate us?
What you have before you, Councilman Mayor, is a proposed renewal of our water conservation plan, and by ordinance, it was the last adopted in 2014 to remain within compliance with TCEQ and also in coordination with the Texas Water Development Board, and also to conserve our water supply in the facilities. It's a plan that's put before TCEQ and is renewed every five years, and that's what's before you this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Renee? Discussion? All in favor? All right. Item E, ordinance number T-2019-44, first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2018 versions of the International Building Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, including appendices as noted, and adopting the 2017 version of the National Electrical Code, adopting local amendments and clarifying the establishment of the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Mayor and council, this is item, similar to item B, that was discussed last month in the workshop setting, taking our codes from the 2012 to the 2018, and then the 2011 to 2017 on the National Electric Code. We need to be within a six-year span, and these codes are published every three years in order to maintain an ISO rating that the city maintains lower insurance premiums.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. All right, item 13, communications from the mayor and council members. Any volunteers? Steve.
I just wanted to thank all of you up here that participated in Hysterween. We had Brent and Robert and the mayor and myself this year. They were all, had active roles, and it went really well. We had a really good one. And Councilman Graffon was excellent as one of the three husbands back there, and he looked like he was having a lot of fun, and so was Brent, so thank you, guys.
You did an excellent job, too, Steve. Nobody say anything about me, but-
Hey, Steve, I want to thank you for mentioning me and also encouraging me to go do that because I wouldn't have done it otherwise. And I'm telling you, the Historical Society puts on a really good event, and we had a ton of people come through there. And yes, I got to remember the life of David Leavelle and my friend Brent over here. He was Edward Bradshaw, and it was just really neat. And your son Jim was there, and we were, of course, remembering the life of Elma Smith, and, you know, something that I did not even know, and I've been a resident of Friendswood for years and years and years, so thank you for encouraging me to do it.
I'm a resident for a year now.
Okay. But it was a lot of fun, and the Historical Society does a wonderful job of what they do. They put on a really great program for everybody.
Sally.
I would just like to reiterate what Councilmember Hank said earlier. I grew up, I started out in P&amp;Z, and I really learned a lot of valuable training that I think has served me well here on council, and I just want to thank y'all for the great job you do. And I know that we've had some very dicey issues before P&amp;Z here of late, and I appreciate that you all really do your due diligence, and I do appreciate your advice in council, because I do come to y'all individually and sometimes a couple of you together, too. But I just want to say thank you. Y'all do an excellent job, and I appreciate it, and I hope y'all will keep up the good work. We appreciate you very, very much.
So I love going to those weekly P&amp;Z meetings.
Twice a week.
Twice a week, excuse me, twice a week. And KFB, thanks. Thanks, I don't have anything else to say.
John.
Thursday, November 7th, Senior Activity Building, Veterans Day celebration, get by there. I think it's from 11:00 to 1:00. So always a great time, good opportunity to thank someone who served and fought for our nation, and I think it's free lunch.
Free lunch for veterans.
So I never pass up the opportunity for a free meal, so I'll see you there Thursday.
Semper Fi. For Marines.
No mention of the Marine Corps birthday Sunday?
Semper Fi. Right?
I just, I wanted to, I know former Mayor Smith's gone, but that Historical Society is a very neat organization, and I appreciate being invited out there to that event. For y'all that hadn't been to that, it's a very, very neat event for, if you don't know the history of this city and how we got here. Also, I was just really impressed reading the senior, or listening to the senior report, just a lot of wonderful things that we continue to do for our city that I think a lot of us might not know how much we do, and that's a growing segment of this city, and I just think it's very important we keep trying to push more through that because it's a wonderful organization, and thanks to all the volunteers and everybody that helps out in this city. Remember well and vote tomorrow so we can see what the future holds. Thanks.
Oh, that's right. Jumped in on that. Well, I'll just say, Saturday morning, 8 o'clock, KEMA Boardwalk, we're gonna walk American Heart Association Heart Walk. We got a little challenge amongst the mayors around the lake for raising funds for this, so we call it the Mayors with Heart Challenge, and so I'm gonna be out there dressed warmly because Heart Walk is always on the coldest Saturday of the year, apparently, at least my experience. I enjoyed being part of Hysterween, although for two years now, I've kind of tramped around out there in the water. It's kind of wet. Maybe we could call it something else, like Hyster 4th of July, I don't know. Sometime when it's not muddy and rainy out there. Just a thought.
Considering we were going against a World Series game, and it was a little cold, but that's a pretty good year, and just to let you know, most of the proceeds we donate to the high school, student council, and business professionals' clubs because they're the ones I help to put on. So this is our ninth year, and in nine years, we donated over $40,000 back to the high school through that event, so.
Steve, you do a great job with all those events. I mean that, and I appreciate that.
We'll get you out there one of these years.
No, you won't.
When Jim Hill was on here, he-
World Series.
When Jim Hill was on here, he said he would never, he didn't want to spend any time in that cemetery before it was his time.
Very good, very good. Well, hey, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Let me say one last thing about Bill Ratso, the new chair of Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, Bill. Thank you. The last guy to step back and say, "Not it," you know.
Right, right, right. Through the straw, straw drop.
Okay, so I got, I heard a motion in a second for consent agenda. All in favor? adjourned.